I'd like to call to order September 5th, 2023 City Council Meeting Order of 701. Call, we are all here present today. Approval of the agenda, I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda. We have a motion by Counsel Santiago to accept the approve the agenda, any seconds?
Second.
Second by Council President Grayson, any question, discussion? All those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, we are now at public comment, this is a place on the agenda where the public is invited to speak to council regarding any matter not on the agenda and not scheduled for public hearing, members of the public addressing council are requested to give their name and city of residence. Speakers are to limit their testimony to five minutes as we are limited to 30 minutes total for all public comments. I've got a timer, I do have one here, Joel Haugen. It's a bench, come on down, your next contestant.
Good grab, babe.
Not that one.
Under fifty dollars.
Joe's all like, oh.
You can't, gotta be careful.
Do's fit in there.
Hey Joel. No water? You guys, you got yours in pretty.
A little skinnier.
Bug there.
Oh, go ahead.
Yeah.
Your time started.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, hope you enjoyed a nice summer. I did. My name is Joel Haugen, a fellow Scapuasian. And a quick note that hopefully you'll think about or chew on. So I'm just gonna read what I, the paragraph that I sent you, gave to you. You may recall a recent scholar, the article by Council of the Friends. Called, I think it was designing multi, called multifunctional urban green spaces. Is that accurate? Pretty close, I may have missed something rather. And a, using scapus as his model for discussion. In any case, this past June, the Oregon Legislature passed House Bill 3409, which in Section 22 articulates a community green infrastructure grant program. It's the last page of the document I handed you. Please note the list of benefits included. On a related subject, the current First Street Foundation's modeling suggests significant parts of scapus will be impacted by increased flooding. That in the worst cases, the hundred year floods will be occurring every eight years. Fortunately in scapus, this is probably more like every 25 years for the hundred year flood. So at least we're in better shape than other parts of the country. If you are unfamiliar with some federal, if you're unfamiliar with the First Street Foundation, its modeling uses, is used by some 30 federal agencies, including NASA, NOAA, Homeland Security, and HUD. And is associated with 45 of our top colleges and universities. I'm not sure UP is on that list, but it's up there. Since you are nearing completion of the 50-year plan for scapus, it seems like it would make sense to include climate change and green infrastructure, infrastructure to help make our community more resilient and livable going forward. Apps HB 3409 is a mechanism to do just that. And thank you, and if you have any questions, happy to bond.
Thank you, Joel.
Thank you.
And, oh by the way, for you cyclists, the final day, I believe, for the rim ride, the register is tomorrow for the Crater Lake Rim Ride. So, and the weather looks beautiful.
Robbie's in the triathlon this Saturday.
Thank you.
Right, anymore Susan, anybody online, anymore? Okay, we are now going into executive session, ORS 192.6602-H, litigation likely to be filed. So, the city's capus will now meet executive session for the purpose of 192.660. Litigation likely to be filed, so 2-H, legal counsel, so we will be having you exit the building. Representation, representatives of news media and designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session. All their members of the audience are asked to leave the room. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on any of the deliberations during the executive session, except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No decision may be made in executive session, at the end of the executive session, we will return to open session and welcome back the audience into the room. So, again, I'm guessing 15 to 20 minutes, could be more, could be less. Okay, thank you. You ready? You ready? On to number two, consent agenda, right? August 21st, 2023 City Council Work Session Meeting Minutes. All right. August 21st, 2023 City Council Meeting Minutes. And contract approver for design build services for Smith Road Pump Station. I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll offer a motion to approve the consent agenda as written.
By Counselor Holmes, accept as written, any seconds? Second by Counselor Santiago, any discussion or question? All those in favor state by saying aye. Aye. Who's opposed? Motion passes. On to number three, new business, Resolution Number 23-14, Resolution Adapting Public Contracting Rules and Procedures and Repealing Resolution 22-21. Public Works Contract Administrator, Charlotte Baker.
Good evening. Listen up to the mic.
A little closer. I don't see the dog.
Okay.
What is it? Just, oh, got it.
It's really to pick up on the recording.
I'm used to mics that reverberate in the room, so. Okay. Um. During the last legislative session, the Oregon Legislature passed Senate Bill 1047 relating to equity and public procurement. Raised the contract price threshold for small and intermediate public procurements for goods and services and public improvement contracts. Changes go into effect on September 24th, 2023, become operational on January 1st, 2024. So, the threshold for small procurements for goods and services will be raised from $10,000 to $25,000 and the threshold for intermediate procurements for goods and services will be raised from $150,000 to $250,000. Threshold for small procurements and public improvements will also be raised from $10,000 to $25,000. The current city resolution regarding public contracting rules and procedures, Resolution Number 22-21, does not reflect these new limits. Set by the state for the, the Oregon Attorney General's Model Public Contracting Rules. Our attorneys have recommended passing a new resolution to reflect these changes. There's no direct fiscal impact. Just keep us in line with the Attorney General's model rules. Staff recommends that council adopt Resolution 23-14, a resolution adopting public contracting rules and procedures and repealing Resolution 22-21 as written.
Or then throughout the SB 1047, the only real changes were to the dollars, nothing to verbiage or wording or?
Yeah, so the name of the, of the bill is a little, a little confusing for our purposes, it was sort of a threefold bill. For our purposes today, the only thing that really applies to the city is the increase in contract limits. There is extra language in there, I don't know if you happen to read the bill. That applies to state level agencies, but that doesn't, doesn't apply to the city. So yeah, the only changes that are, that are relevant for the city are increasing the contract limit.
So in here it says the changes go into effect on September 24th, 2023, but I'm sorry, I don't remember exactly what you.
Become operational on January 1st.
Operational on January 1st, and what is the difference? What is the difference in between they go into effect and then operational, you know?
Honestly, that didn't make a lot of sense. When we read the bill, what it essentially said was that it went into effect ninety-one days after passage, which was September twenty-fourth. But then in the, basically the paragraph above it, it said they weren't operational until January one. So in speaking with our attorney, they felt like we couldn't use the numbers until January one, but it allowed us to pass this ahead of that. I, I, I thought that was weird, but that's
Yeah.
They said.
Yeah, no, I understood it. September
Yeah.
And the January one.
Yeah.
Operational means.
Um, it's not.
We just can't use the new limits until January one.
The model, the model rules themselves are changing on, on September twenty-fourth, but won't be used until January one.
It's very weird.
And then does that mean that you can't reach that limit until after that?
That's how I would take that, is that?
A procurement until?
No, I would, I would just still operate under, if I was, if we were doing any procurement between now and then, is I would just use the existing limits and then bump up in January.
Yeah, I just, like, not that it really matters in our case, because I don't think we have anything going, but I, I'm just
No.
Thinking out loud here.
Yeah, right.
To everybody for that, but, um, I'm just wondering if, um, you have a procurement that, let's say it's ongoing right now. And, you know, does, it's already been started, in other words. And then would it matter if you, would the one hundred and fifty thousand limit apply or would the two hundred and fifty?
So I think the big thing, though, is that if we, so for an example, if we have any RFP, good, RFPs going right now, that's what we would do with the highest limit. So that's not going to affect anything. It's just about the type of procurement you're using. It's not about like the final result of the project value necessarily. So, um, if we have any RFPs out, that's fine. We're still doing, um, basically the highest and best, um, type of procurement. It's not intermediate. Um, so it's really going to only come into effect if we're maybe thinking about doing an intermediate procurement, but I don't think we have anything big coming up for intermediate procurements. I think most of it's all going to be RFPs, so we'd be covered either way.
So why is there a, if it's a competitive procurement that applies to one hundred and fifty, to the one hundred and fifty, currently the one hundred and fifty thousand limit? I mean, we have things that happen all the time that are over a hundred and fifty or going to be to over two hundred and fifty. But if it's an art, if it's a competitive solicitation, then why does it ma, I mean, what, what do we do? All right, let me ask this differently. What do we do for procurements that are over right now, a hundred and fifty thousand, going to be over two hundred and fifty thousand?
Do an RFP.
Still a competitive, but isn't that a competitive procurement?
Well, yeah, I mean, yeah, so basically you're, you're changing the, um, amount of projects that would fall into that intermediate space, right? I mean, that's, that's what they're doing. They're, they're just increasing the amount of projects that, you know, would not need to go out for an RFP. For our intents and purposes, there's still a lot of things that would need an RFP. Um, but there'd be a few things in that middle range that would only need the three quotes.
Yeah.
That's, that's really the, the primary thing here that's changing. It doesn't change how many contracts you see, because it doesn't change my limit or authority. Um, so i- in terms of, of what you're seeing and, and witnessing, in terms of what comes through the door and projects we're working on, it doesn't really change anything. It just might change the mechanism that we gather the information for you. It might be three quotes instead of an RFP that comes in front of you for approval.
Yeah, it's the, I answered, I, I see the answer to the question right here, actually. I'm sorry, it's, it's related to the three, having to get three quotes versus a
Correct.
Yeah.
Yes, yes, so you, you just might see more projects coming to you where we're like, hey, this, this, you know, procurement process was three quotes instead of an RFP.
Yeah.
I understand now, thank you.
The intermediate level.
Right, so that's just getting bigger, that intermediate level.
To add on, what is your current process for small, like, or is it, is it a credit card or the government card purchase? What is your process for small purchases right now? So you explained what the process is for intermediate, but for the, from the ten going to twenty-five, that's the twenty-five would be the small purchases, right? That's what this thing.
So we, we don't, not generally using credit cards for anything like that.
What is your current process? The small.
Well, it depends. If it's under the threshold where you, if you are under the threshold and you don't need to get quotes, I mean, we still generally do get quotes for the most part. Um, on occasion, if it's under the limit and it's just a special circumstance where, you know, we need it from a certain, um, vendor or something like that, you might just go directly to that vendor. Um, but we're typically getting invoice from those vendors. We're not putting anything on credit cards or anything like that.
I'm saying, e- even if it's a twenty or a small purchases and immediate, we still have a process, correct? For procurement.
Right, but the smaller the amount gets.
So the process of procurement, you're still want to get a fair price of whatever you're spending now is not ten thousand, now it's twenty-five thousand, going to be twenty-five thousand. So in the small procurement process, what are we doing to still make sure that we get a fair price?
We're typically still getting three quotes.
Three quotes, even.
If you can, if you can.
If you can, even in the small purchases.
Typically, yes.
It's just not the legal requirement.
Right, you're no longer, yeah.
It's just we follow the, the model rules, and so this is just making sure that we're in alignment with the model rules, because, uh, we haven't adopted our own contracting.
Still are typically exceeding
Yeah.
Rules for a small procurement and still typically getting quotes. Again, it's more of just a question of, you know, are we, do we need something specifically from a certain vendor? And it just happens to be in that low amount, so we can make that direct purchase, um, or something like that, those kind of considerations.
Just meant like, just because, just because you can do a direct, a direct appointment for a small procurement, doesn't mean that we're necessarily doing that. Um, that's just what the model rules state.
Yeah, so it's just like, you know, like, you know, Google, going local, I mean, it's just those little, like, there is still, needs to be a process, correct? That's why I'm saying that we need to have accountability of what we're doing as a city or as an agency to make sure that we have an idea. And it would help me sure that, no, hey, our purchases, this is a structure for small, this is a structure for intermediate, this is a structure above two fifty. So, I mean, I can assume that this is the process, but until we, my thing is, is, uh, it's great that typically we do this, typically we do that. But it would be great for us to be transparent on how our procurement is.
So I would argue, though, that we are very transparent on our procurement. All of our records are public, we follow the model rules, um, everything is tracked, you know, there's multiple layers of approvals with purchase orders. You know, department head signing off, me signing off, um, everything goes through, you know, the finance administrator. So I, I would definitely hesitate to say that some, somehow something we're doing isn't transparent or tracked or organized in any way.
Well, and this, this also directly correlates to your spending authority that we
Right.
So that
And that's not changing.
Right, and that's also a piece that directly, I mean, Alex as a city manager has authority to discretionary authority up to a certain amount that we already approved. And I think we basically beat that to death and we went over that process. And, yeah, I mean, based on what I have seen, um, just you know, from other public entities in this area, I think that we do very, very well our procurements and we, um, really stretch the tax dollar. Really well.
I think it's real transparent, we could always ask anytime, we can ask, see. I'm looking at, I like examples, so if you're buying a mower that you pull behind a tractor and it was eight thousand dollars, they could just go to their tractor dealer and buy one without having to go out for bids. But now prices went up to fourteen thousand, and now it would require you to go out for a competitive process. And it's the same thing, but now this allows you not, you can just go pick it up from your local tractor.
Right, and just saying that if we, and we're getting to the twenty-five thousand now, obviously the purchase is going to be, you know, bigger and just if we have a process, like, just for our, you know, just, just to cover ourselves.
Yeah, the process we have wouldn't change. Um, you're, what you're really looking at is just, honestly, this is just catching up with inflation. Ten thousand didn't get you anything anymore, and the, these haven't changed since I've been here, and I've been here for eight years. So, I mean, I think really the state's just, kind of just getting caught up on what the dollar really, you know, can buy, the power of the dollar at this point.
Charlotte, just, uh, since I'm this does, uh, I know you mentioned it in the beginning, um, and, but this is by Senate Bill ten forty-seven, right?
Yeah.
And so, um, just to clarify and for the records, it is a equity procurement, uh, public procurement.
Yeah, um, so it's sort of, the bill itself, um, it's, it, I sort of see it as like a threefold thing, because it has these requirements, or it increases the limits for public contracting. It also directs state agencies, um, to do certain things. And then at the, at the very bottom in section five, it directs DAS, the Department of Administrative Services, to do something as well related to equity. Um, the only one that applies to the city is the first part about, um, increasing contracting limits, and that doesn't have a whole lot to do with equity. Um, I think mostly equity pieces are, are, um, and those other two sections that I mentioned that, that only apply to state level agencies.
I think, um, I understand we've had this discussion, so I just want to make sure that, verify that if we're going to adopt Bill ten forty-seven and just, like, you're, what we're, what you're saying is that we're picking or choosing
No, we're applying the sections that apply to the city. So the sections, like, for example, section four, like, that you referenced, um, that is specific to DAS, the Department of Administrative Services, which is the procurement arm of the state. So the state has recently done, um, some extensive DEI work, it's my understanding, um, and assessment. So this bill reflects some instructions they are giving to their state agencies regarding procurement. Um, so no, I wouldn't say we're picking and choosing, we are, um, adopting the portions of the bill that apply to the city.
I would also say, um, we're not adopting Senate Bill ten forty-seven, we're just adopting the, the updated model, we're just changing our, uh, public contracting procedures to be in line with the updated model rules. And the model rules were updated by Senate Bill ten forty-seven.
Right.
But that's the only section of that bill that applies to us.
Well, that's, that's, so you're adopting, you're adopting the, the Senate bill. But, um, so again, I know that DAS is what the, uh, it's the authority procurement, so. But again, I'm just gonna, for my record, I'm gonna, the, the Senate bill is actually called the Equity in Public Procurement. So I'm still, and I know we're, we talked about putting, uh, the equity part in there, but section three of ten forty-seven does indicate bring it up. Check it out. Section one is the ten to twenty-five, section two is the, uh, one fifty to two fifty, what we are adopting, and then section section three. Um, here, it's section three, and just to read it. So the, um, it complies with ORS two hundred dot thirty-five and, and B, which is invite, participate in procurement qualified business or enterprises that are certification office of business inclusion and diversity certifies under ORS two hundred dot zero fifty-five, which is basically the certification of, of Oregon, which is COVID. So I would love for the council, make sure in the city
So that section does state it's a state contracting agency?
They are, they are. Yes, they, for the state contracting agency, Washington has its own, um.
This only applies to state contracting agency that'll work.
I just, I just, just to clarify, so DAS is only the authority over state of Oregon agencies, so like Oregon State Police, Oregon Department of Transportation. And so they have different requirements that they roll out that apply only to the state agencies like OSV and ODOT.
I'm talking about, that's in section five they were talking about, I'm talking about section three. You know, what I would like for us, I know we're adapting what, or adopting whatever we would like from this ten forty-seven, but I would like for us to adopt in the city to make sure that we make an effort to go to the COVID, uh, COVID directory just to invite diverse firms to contracts, especially in the intermediate to above contracts. That's what I'm saying.
Um, so yes, there is a section that relates just to DAS. There's also a section where it says state contracting agencies, um, and, uh, you all actually, as city council, are considered a local contract review board, not a state contract agency. Um, so.
I think for this purpose, I mean, we're only looking at adopting existing rules to align with new public contracting limits set by ten forty-seven, not adopting ten forty-seven, or adopting ten forty-seven. We're just, um, lining ourself with the public contract limits. I think what you're saying and what I would like to maybe do at a later time is look at that, revisit that whole ten forty-seven and then see if there is areas that when we can improve or work on.
Yeah, because I, yes.
Through goal setting and looking at equity.
Right, if we're going to adopt it, we're going to, I, I would like to see the whole thing, how we can adopt it, not just
For clarification really quick, uh, you're literally just changing from our current policy, a hundred and fifty thousand to two hundred and fifty thousand.
Correct.
Is that all that's changing right now?
Yes.
Current policy, okay, so we're literally just changing about to inform with what the state's already adopted. So I do agree with the mayor that this topic of any other changes with this would be, you know, we need to bring that up on a separate, separate agenda item.
Yeah, because we could do this and then, and do that.
Okay, can we make a, just a note of that?
Oh, so specifically the term state contracting agency is a term of art, describes a executive branch of the state only. So we, we aren't adopting Senate bill that's been adopted by the state legislature. We're aligning our practices and policies to what's required by the state. Council wants to make a change elsewhere, that's another decision like you're talking about, a separate matter. This particular matter right here is just making sure that tomorrow or January one, we're in compliance with what's required. We want to go above and beyond or change other things, agencies, local contracting agencies, do that. That's not what Senate bill's asking you to do. It's just saying, contracting agencies have to change their thresholds, state, well, executive branch have to do this, DAS has to do this. So if you have an idea that you want to change something else, that's fine, but for the purposes of this bill, this right here, this resolution, all that does is make sure that on January one, we're in compliance and we're not going to lose. That conversation certainly can happen in another form.
Well.
For our purposes, we are aligning ourselves.
Correct, yeah, and then, you know, and one thing I had, you know, spoken briefly with the mayor about, um, a few weeks back, um, and then mentioned to Counselor Santiago as well, is that, um, you know, I have looked at some DEI work done, completed by other cities. Um, and typically speaking, when those assessments are done, they do cover things like procurement, hiring, and, you know, policies, things like that. Um, I did mention to the mayor that I thought, um, that would be something I would like to bring up at the next goal setting session, um, with respect to maybe getting that into the budget for next year. Um, however, you know, I think that takes a, um, full-fledged assessment of everything we're doing. I don't think necessarily kind of piecemealing it, you know, even though I think we're actually, um, doing some things currently that essentially are kind of piecemealing some of these, uh, things, especially after having read some of the reports and seen what they're being recommended to do. Um, that was good news that we are doing some of those things, but I think a full-fledged assessment would be helpful. Um, so I do think that that could certainly be something we look at in the future and then budget for. Um, but, you know, to your point, yeah, right now, we're just trying to bring ourselves into alignment with the, um, aspects of SB ten forty-seven that do apply to local governments.
Just as a contract review board, what you've done is you've adopted the state contracting rules, and so we just want to make sure that we are not exposing ourselves when we go out for procurements. Want to make sure that we're aligning ourselves with the rules. And you, you can change different portions of it, but some of them, sometimes the state says you have to do this. And in this particular Senate bill, the only thing we have to do, make sure we're legal, is to increase our limits for now.
I would like to propose, if we can do, since we're having to wait till January, uh, two, twenty twenty-four, we can, if I, I like to propose we can make those changes, so we have everything pass at once or implement that.
You, I mean, I know it's public meetings, but are you able to explain what you're wanting us to do? And if you can get to other members along with you, then that is something we would propose at looking at doing.
Sure, it's just to implement section three of Bill, Senate Bill ten forty-seven.
Mayor.
Yes.
We haven't had time to assess what that might mean for staff. I would guess that we would want to take a look at what that would do.
Very complicated, it's just, it's just going through the COVID directory, inviting them, and that's it.
Right.
I don't even know what that means, so I would
You know, we've never done anything like that.
Yeah, I mean, I would say, is, is anyone interested in looking at that and reviewing it, seeing if that is something that we would like to look at?
So, my opinion on this is that there's some misunderstanding on different levels in that we need to take the time first to read through this and understand it and engage in some dialogue with, um, the city manager, uh, to make sure that we do understand what's going on, um, here. And then if we want to put that on the agenda for further discussion, I think that would be appropriate.
I would, I would just also like to note, um, that section, uh, also requires that state agencies report their procurement procedures to the governor's policy advisor for economic and business equity. So if we were to just adopt that as is, it, that's not, I mean, we wouldn't have anyone to report to.
It's worth to make
I would say you would be taking language from three and then putting it in And I would say you would be taking language from three and then putting it into our
Yeah.
procurement process.
Yeah.
Just adopting theirs, because theirs is referring to us and to state agencies.
Yeah.
That wouldn't even affect us. So, but we would want to put that into our.
There's, there's so many considerations with Chapter 279, too, that it is a major headache to try to understand and read. I've tried many times. And so the other component of this is, is if this is something that we want to do, we do need to have legal counsel weigh in to see if that we're not jeopardizing or introducing or even doing something illegal with applying DAS rules to city, to a city operational practice, too. So I just would want to be very sure that we're not doing anything that we, I, I understand the intent. The intent here is to do something very fair and, and good, but we just need to make sure that we're.
Oregon, Oregon and Washington are doing the same. They're trying to encourage more procurement for small businesses, women-owned businesses and minority-owned businesses. This is, there's nothing illegal about it. It's just the effort of inviting those businesses to the opportunities. That's all it is. It's not a requirement that you have to procure with them, it's just to invite them to the procurement process.
Alex did bring this up a couple of weeks ago, so I do believe she was, you know, interested to in looking at our equity policy. But I think it, it would be at a later time for our goals.
Um, just historically, I know it's hard to think, oh, we would adopt a goal in January and then we'd have to, but items such as this, where we're reviewing policies or it requires X amount of hours of staff time, those things really do need to be like a hardcore, established council goal in order for that to be an item of focus. So I know it's hard to, to think that far off, but for that work to be done in a manner that's thorough, it does usually need to be an official council goal or directive for that, that next following year. I think there's a couple of different layers that obviously staff wants to look through.
My, my concern aligns with Tyler Miller's, which is that I'm not really sure what the contract review board, which is you have adopted or haven't, or what you're allowed to adopt or not adopt. We haven't ever looked at anything like this. So my concern does align with yours. Actually, that was one of the first things I was, what, what we're allowed to do and not do legally.
And adopting the DAS rules might not be appropriate or even legal for us to do, but that doesn't mean that we can't do something that's similar, that is, that accomplishes what.
Correct.
Councilor Santiago is, is trying to, what the intent is here, so.
And I don't, I don't think we could fulfill the DAS requirements.
That's, that's what makes it so complex, is you're right, there's layers, there's a lot of layers to this. And it does seem very simple on its face. And you're right, it's a good thing, just a matter of making sure we're doing it correctly and legally, we're not creating ourselves a risk.
Yeah, it's just adding, it's, as an agency, you can create your own procurement processes. But I'm just adding, adding just the, a, a one step, when you're doing a certain type of procurement, just, you know, going through the COVID directory to search for certain firms, like when you're inviting people, right? It's part of the process of putting out the solicitation. It's, it's that simple. I, it's not very complicated. I mean, I used to do that kind of work, so that's not very complicated.
I'm not, I'm not saying that.
Yeah.
But it pulls strings.
Right. Okay, moving on, are we, we have anybody?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I move that Council adopt Resolution 23 dash 14A, Resolution adopting public contracting rules and procedures and repealing Resolution 22 dash 21.
That's the one that was updated today with five, the new public contracting limits will be operative January 1, 2020.
Yes.
Show my Council President Grayson, any second?
Second.
My Counselor Holmes, Resolution number 23 dash 14, a resolution adopting public contracting rules and procedures and repealing Resolution number 2221. Any discussion? Those in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Yeah, opposed.
Motion carried.
Thank you, Charlotte.
You, Charlotte. Yeah, just for record.
Um, hey, we are on now. Our calendar?
No. Just one final item, the December dates.
December city council meeting dates.
So typically speaking, you know, obviously your meetings are going to be the first and third Monday of the month. However, the last several years, just because of holidays, we've usually done the first and second Monday of the month for December, just so that everyone has a little bit more freedom around those holidays to make plans. So I just wanted to make sure that that was okay with you all, and that's how you would prefer to do that. Otherwise, we can stick with the regular schedule.
December 4th and December 11.
Correct.
By me. Is it not the 12th?
Something sounds big.
30th anniversary last year and I was here at a council.
That's, oh. Better not do that again.
Dedication. What'd you say?
December 4th and 11.
11, okay. Back to back.
Forget the rest of the month.
Okay.
We want to vote on that? Do we have to?
We just, no. I think you just did. Yeah. I think you're all good. Yeah.
You're the one that makes the agenda, so.
Yeah, right.
You just tell us.
But I wanted to make sure that was okay with everybody's schedule.
Right. Now we're onto the calendar. It's September 5th, tomorrow, okay, Saturday, every Saturday in September, Farmers Market, 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Tuesday, September 12, 50-year SAC meeting at 6:00 PM. Thursday, September 14, Planning Commission meeting at 7:00 PM. And we do have an out-of-the-darkness walk at Heritage Park. I don't know if that's during Farmers Market, I don't know the hours of it, but it is on September 16.
You know about that? You know anything about that?
Got little signs up. The signs are on the highway.
They're hard to read, but they're there.
Okay.
And then on September 18, we have a Urban Renewal Agency meeting at 6:00 PM, followed by City Council meeting at 7:00 PM. Thursday, the 21st, EDC meeting at noon, followed by Parks and Rec Committee meeting at 6:00 PM. That is it for September. Department reports, anything from City Manager Alex Rain?
Tonight.
Please Chief Steve Lugal.
Officer Burglin is back, started his new shift on Sunday. Our lateral started today and hopefully will be fully operational by October 1st.
Wife said she saw Burglin bash at schools the other day, or?
And flailing.
Uh, we'll start with Counselor Holmes.
All right.
He was ready. Um, no, I don't have too much to report out, since we got the lovely report out on the 50-year plan, but I do just want to acknowledge all of those teachers and administrators that just made my life easier with.
I'll Counselor LaFrenk.
Didn't have any, now I'm going to say that. Uh, yeah, I'd just like to encourage everyone to be patient, slow down in the morning with the schools back and kids and leave a little earlier. Just keep everyone safe.
All right. Counselor Santiago.
And the 23rd, Mayor, was it us? We went to a meeting, Alex was there, and we went, there was a, a meeting with Aiden.
Adrian.
Adrian, sorry, Adrian. And he's a gentleman that started the, the, kind of the version of OMEC in the UK, right? So it was very informative. Senator Betsy Johnson was there. Whoever, Anamichi was there. It was very, it was very informative. I mean, I, I just loved the conversation. I think there's great possibilities, I think, with OMEC, obviously, but I think what his point, Adrian's point, was that we, we need to expand our minds and open of all the possibilities that we can, having OMEC in our backyard and the city to be working with, with OMEC. So that was a very inspiring meeting. What else do we do? Oh, the parking rec, I'm not sure if I, I let you guys know last time, but we went through the amenities of each park. And that was great. The committee, which loved everything that Dave was suggesting. And so that's moving forward. And then also they liked the design. I think they finally kind of went through a finalizing the, you know, kind of the, the, the design that they want to implement at Grabhorn. So that was thumbs up. And I think that's about it.
Thank you. Counselor Miller?
I do not have anything tonight. Thank you.
I am. Don't worry about it. Um, back to school nights were great, seeing lots of officers there. Thank you for being present. Um, I had it on my list to talk about walkers and, and traffic and just being mindful of that. Another thing that's going to start picking up are Saturday soccer games, so weekends around the schools and, and the fields, being mindful of little kids running in and out of minivans, rushing to practice and games. Um, let's see. Um, I'll save that one for last. Um, traffic safety, Public Works has kind of wrapped up their like curb painting and street painting, no parking zones. They really take advantage of that during the warm, dry, dry season. Um, in regards to schools, Alex and the mayor and I had a meeting with some SCAPU School District leadership in regards to the bond, just to gain some details on that, potentially how the city can be a part of that if the bond does pass. And so it's my recommendation that as we did with the sheriff's measure, that we adopt and pass a formal resolution to support the SCAPU School District bond. If that is something that the majority of council is interested in, at the following meeting, we will have a resolution written for us to read. This was our thumbs up, thumbs to the side. To look at a resolution that would potentially.
The only thing for resolution is us.
Hundred percent.
Yeah.
Nobody from, yeah, no one from staff. We got, their hands are off. They've got their, they've got their measure number officially and, and all that, so they're ready to roll. But.
Take a little nuance.
Yeah.
I know, yeah, I'm like, no.
Sorry, let's clarify that. We are doing that, not the city. Yeah.
Yeah.
And non, so mayor, add it to the agenda. Hey, I thought we said I was going to do that, sorry. Okay. Um, it was fun to see Mrs. Backus back in her element today and all the teachers. I'm already starting to get jobs with subbing. And thank you for being patient when I walk in late to work sessions. It'll probably happen more with soccer practices being on Mondays with our other meetings. Thank you.
Yeah, first day of school, it's a big one. I got pictures of my wife as she was walking off to school. You think the schools for taking your kids? I have to, I lose my wife for nine months now. And, so, or maybe I'll see her, no, she'll be in better. I'm sure by the time I get home. But, um, yeah, so it's a tough time right now when the school starts. She's excited, she's got a great class of 28 kids, but it will be fun. Movies in the park, I think it was a great success again. I want to thank Chief Lugal for all their help and support. I think it was a lot of fun and enjoyed that. And again, yes, with the bond resolution. And it was exciting to see OMEC Sheffield and see how much growth and potential there is with what they've done with their place. And we've got some good, smart people out there, so I think they're going to do a lot of good stuff. That's all I have for tonight. Appreciate it.